Council Agenda, Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, regular Township Council meeting of October 15th, 2019.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 19th, 2018, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 27th, 2018, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 19th, 2018. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Public Access Channel 21 at 7:00 PM Sundays and Wednesdays, and are also available for viewing at www.parsippany.net.
Please rise and flag salute. Mrs. Grignani, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Ms. Grignani?
Present.
Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Carriffy?
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor Michael Soriano, Business Administrator Keith Kazmark, CFO Ann Cucci, Township Attorney Jim Lot, and the Township Clerk Collette Madden. Council President, we have a quorum, you may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, November 12th, 7:00 PM Agenda Meeting; November 26th, 7:00 PM Regular Meeting; Approval of Minutes Agenda Meeting, July 2nd; Regular Meeting, July 16th; Agenda Meeting, August 5th; Regular Meeting, September 17th; Agenda Meeting, October 1st.
Motion to approve the meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Presentations, reports, Mayor?
Nothing to report, Mr. Council President. Thank you.
Township Council, any Council members?
I have a couple of things, if I may. About a month and a half ago, I raised an issue about four-ton limit signs that were missing on Vale Road from the Monville area all the way to Route 46. The answer I got back from our Business Administrator was that the school district complained because the buses weigh more than four tons. So the Engineering Department's solution was to remove all the signs. Dumb, dumb decision. The purpose of the signs was to prevent trucks from using our local roads as bypasses when there's an accident on 80 or 287. We don't want the trucks finding alternate routes through our town. There was no problem with the buses, but certainly we don't want the through-traffic. We get some pretty big trucks come through there when our highways are backed up. They're using our local roads as bypasses. Mr. Kazmark, I'd like the signs put back. If you want to raise it to five tons, fine, so the buses are okay. We had no intention of worrying about buses, they're local. It's the through-traffic that we need to stop. So I would like the signs put back, either with the four-tonnage or with five tons, but I want the signs put back so we deter trucks from using our local roads.
Councilman, I'll revisit the issue with the Engineering Department.
Thank you. Another issue came forward, I don't understand, I'll just relay it to you. I'm told that our Little League has to go out of town to practice because the PAL charges them too much. I don't know why this is true, that someplace out of town charges less than our PAL would for our own kids. Could you check into that and see what's going on there?
I will, Councilman, I'll follow up with the PAL Director. I can tell you that I know that there was a meeting with Mr. Mazzarella where I believe that issue was resolved, but I will follow up and get you an answer tomorrow.
Please do. One more thing. I believe the Mayor received a petition and a letter from the group up on Manor Lane with the very caustic individual who came up to visit us last month. Mayor, what can we do to help the residents in that neighborhood? Apparently warnings don't work.
I've discussed it with the petitioner already. Okay, the main petitioner being Justin Di Pasqual. This is a nuanced issue. This is not a simple issue, this is a neighbor-to-neighbor dispute. There's also a litigation that is pending, and because of that litigation, I really don't want to comment too much on this, but we are on it. And this is something that the Building Department, Building Inspectors, as well as the Police Department are on.
And Parks and Forestry.
And Parks and Forestry.
That gentleman has cut down all of the trees in his property without permission.
This has been an ongoing issue since 2006.
Yeah.
Long time.
And in the meantime, warnings don't work, and he's still doing what he wants to do. Something more drastic has to be done. That's it for me, thank you.
I just have one question, Mr. Kazmark. I know I emailed you a while ago. The issue with the Manor Lake, the dam there?
Yes.
Those properties that now their backyards are flooding because the dam's raising the lake, you know, the pond area there? And are we doing anything about that?
So I've had at least half a dozen conversations with Mr. Lizza about this. The dam was rebuilt, as you know, a number of years ago. The water levels that currently exist there are the appropriate water levels. Now, we understand the concerns that the residents share. We do not believe that any water is actually encroaching on their private property. We do understand that there are some trees that are submerged beyond their property line. But Justin has indicated to me that that is the appropriate way that the dam was designed. I asked him to come back to see if there were any type of recommendations that would move that water line back away from those people's private properties. I can follow up with him to see if he's come up with any type of recommendations.
I know I've spoken to some of the residents there, and they were saying even if, you know, we could put like some kind of berm or something up so that just in case it were to go a little bit higher?
Right.
It doesn't come rushing into their property.
I'll follow up with him and I'll mention that suggestion that the residents are making.
Wouldn't the dam overflow if that were the case? I mean, and flow downstream?
Well, I think the prior dam construction was compromised, and that's what kept the water level behind these folks' properties at a lower level.
At a lower level.
Correct. And now the dam is reconstructed to the specifications that it's supposed to be, and therefore the water levels are higher. I did specifically ask him if that water was encroaching on these folks' private property, and he indicated to me, no, although if you're standing in their backyard, beyond their property line, the water is at a higher level than it was prior. Correct. But I'll follow up and I'll talk to Justin.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, Township Attorney, Mr. Lot?
I have one item for closed session tonight, as noted on the agenda.
Okay. Business Administrator, Mr. Kazmark?
Thank you, Council President. Today, all of the departmental budgets were due and submitted to my office for 2020. We will begin budget hearings amongst the administration, my office, and the Chief Financial Officer beginning Monday. So the 2020 budget preparation process is underway. We have a number of personnel matters that we are dealing with on a daily basis here. Two of those we're hopeful to get concluded by the end of the month. I will be circulating some proposed dates later this month for the Golf Committee to meet that was formed when we met a number of weeks ago. Both the Kemper Sports Management and the Catering Contract at the Knoll Country Club are both set to expire in 2020. The Mayor and the Council agreed during a closed session that we would formulate a committee that would include Councilman DePiero, Councilmember Peterson, and the Mayor, along with myself and Ms. Cucci. So those will hopefully be able to call a meeting with regard to that either by late October or the first week or two of November. We are in the process of finalizing the blue-collar supervisor's contract for ratification, and I would expect that to be on the agenda for your November 12th Council meeting. And with that, I just want to turn it over to our CFO Ann Cucci to discuss the Best Practices Checklist, which needed to be discussed at tonight's Agenda prior to her submission to the State of New Jersey.
Thank you. I just handed out, Collette handed out, the Best Practice Inventory. What that is, is the state requires us to fill out this form, and it's quite extensive. It's 84 questions, some of which are scored, what they call scored, and some are not. It's trying to understand each of the municipality's practices in terms of procurement, personnel, a whole series of different things, such as shared services, finance, cybersecurity. And we answer those questions, yes, no, and then usually, sometimes, perspective. This is different this year because usually it's 100 questions or 80 questions, and all of them are scored. But in this one, it's only 84, and of the 84, 31 are not scored. So when you look at it, it's a little different. I went from, and talked to every single department practically about this because it involves cybersecurity, pilots, planning. I had to reach out to our planners, and Leslie London, and also involved the master plan. What this does is that resulting with this inventory determines how much state aid that we are able to get, whether it's 100% or 50 or whatever. And based on the answers you have in your packet there, we have 100% funding from the state, which is good news. It has to be submitted by October 30th, but we are required to hand it out to the Council. There's no action to be taken, it's just noted as part of the agenda. If you have any questions, you can reach out to either me or Keith at any time before we submit it, probably before the 30th if that's...
Ann, you also did this last year, if I remember correctly.
Every year, yep.
And what was our score at last year's?
Again, 100%. We got all of our aid, we've always gotten all our aid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just through you, Council President, the questions are significantly different than they have been over the last couple of years. There's an entire unweighted section that you'll observe when you look through the packet where they are soliciting feedback from the municipality as to whether or not the state can come in and be of assistance with various programs. So I thought that was an interesting new twist to the Best Practices Checklist. But Ann did a good job, all the department heads were responsive. If the Council has any questions, as she stated, you know, please let us know, any feedback. But other than that, we will plan to submit by the state deadline.
Also, we'll go up on the website once it's submitted.
That concludes my report, Council President.
Thank you. Township Clerk, Mr. Madden?
No report at this time, Council President, thank you.
Okay, Township Offices, Committees, Reports, anything?
Just one. Craftsman Farms had their 30th Anniversary Gala, and it was a huge success. And Emily had a video there, which was very nice.
I'm sorry, I couldn't attend, I was there in spirit.
I was there. And we had a, the report I got back preliminarily was, the gala was a huge success. And they thanked everybody who participated in the gala.
Thank you.
Okay, bids taken? September 18th, Lake Hiawatha Water Main Replacement, Phase 1. September 20th, Elevator Subcode Official.
Council President, if I may, the elevator subcode official. Do we have a salary range on that, that we're bidding out for?
Well, prior to this, most municipalities in the state had an actual elevator inspector who was an employee. In this particular case, what a lot of municipalities are doing, and so is Parsippany, is we went out to bid and we're actually contracting with a firm to provide this service on an as-needed basis.
We used to have our own.
We used to have our own, that's correct. So if you take a look at Mike Hardy's purchasing report, he's recommending the appointment of this firm for a contract of three years, and there would be approximately 450 elevators to be inspected. And then we would establish the cost for each of those inspections by Township ordinance.
Okay. I noticed on the bills list that we did have two elevator inspections. Are those the normal costs to have these inspections done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, bids to be taken, October 17th. One new, 2020, four-by-two, Class A chassis and reel loader for the Sanitation Department. October 30th, Knoll West Country Club Irrigation System Replacement. Quotations, proposals, qualifications, none. This time entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Our floor is open to the public on any matter.
Okay, when you come up, please state your name and address. You'll be given five minutes.
Kevin Brancato. I don't think it's on, Collette.
Oh, I apologize. It needs the special touch of the clerk.
I think I got it.
No, I think you got it.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Well done.
I think you're out of a job.
You started getting close.
I think I'm out of a job.
It was a vibe, you got close.
Kevin, I really appreciate you getting that on.
Kevin Brancato, 14 Celtic Way. It's appropriate that you've got a committee going on the Knoll Country Club because I'm representing, I'm one of the men representing members of the former Knoll Advisory Committee, now the Mayor and Kemper's focus group. I'd just like everybody to raise their hands so you know how many of us are here. We came tonight to speak on the Knoll. I provided you all with a packet that has a summary of what I'm going to read into the record. It has, I was fortunate enough to be on the bid committee for, evaluation committee for Kemper Sports. I've got my notes indicating how I felt at that time. I have a copy of the contract, which we opened, and what we feel are pertinent clauses. With that being said, I'm going to read this into the record. "In 2018, after two unsuccessful attempts to bid the contract to the then-current golf pro, the township made the decision to request bids from golf management companies. I was fortunate to be asked to be involved in the evaluation of the bidders, Kemper Sports and Billy Casper Golf. I have provided you a copy of my evaluation summary along with my notes from the process. My conclusion was to award the contract to Kemper Sports for reasons laid out in my evaluation, which I hope you all will read. It's important to note, however, that the recommendation that the township hire a qualified person to oversee the Kemper operation for the town was not acted on. After two years of witnessing Kemper's performance, it has become very obvious to me that I made a mistake in my recommendation. Kemper was aware in April of 2018 that they won the award and knew the time would be of the essence in getting started because the 2018 golf season was already underway. Contracts were signed on June 1st, 2018. Kemper had six weeks to get their employees in line, have an operating plan in place, and otherwise be prepared to go on day one. Unfortunately, this was not the case. In fact, the regular golf pro assigned permanently to the Knoll was not in place until September 2018, fully five months after they were first notified. Then, he left after one week to play golf for two weeks. Essentially, between Kemper's late start, along with the weather, caused the 2018 season to be a total bust, which left many people unhappy with our choice. This year, 2019, was more of the same confusion, although marginally better. In my opinion, the main reasons are the turnover in the Kemper staff and lack of oversight from the town. All of that being said, it's fairly obvious to me that we need to move on from Kemper Sports and take another direction at the Knoll. The concern, as I see it, is timing. We need to start planning a new start now. I've also enclosed a copy of the contract between Township and Kemper. I've marked clauses that upon investigation by the Council could be areas of non-performance, which I believe could and should be used to negotiate an exit from this agreement before the end of 2019. If we do give six-month notice, it will leave Kemper as a lame-duck contractor with less incentive to perform in the Knoll's best interests. It will also put the utility in a position, once again, of starting a new golf operation in the middle of the season, which I believe could lead to a disaster like the 2018 season. Members will not tolerate that. I estimate that the membership fees collected to be between $500,000 and $750,000 annually, which represents a very substantial portion of the golf revenue. Members have already moved on, and many more are considering it. Why should we continue to put one of our main sources of revenue in jeopardy? I believe that the golf utility cannot absorb another lost season. My big concern is that we are out of time. What we really need to do is look at the future of the Knoll as quickly as possible and stop worrying about what is past. We cannot wait until June to figure out what to do while the utility slowly crumbles to the point that it could be beyond repair. We must move forward now. I urge you to take a positive action now before it's too late." So?
Sorry, you have 30 seconds.
Okay. Well, that's basically it, unless anybody has any questions. I did travel to Galloping Hill to see a Kemper operation there. And their operation at Galloping Hill was outstanding, it was very impressive. Possibly because they had a local director who was in charge, not just Kemper. Mike, I believe that 100%, and the man was qualified. He was a golf professional. He took golf management at Arizona State and was a college-level golfer. He knew the operation, he knew what needed to be done. So the success at Galloping Hill might have been as much to him or more to him than to Kemper himself? I think so. You know, we abdicated our responsibility to run our utility. We expected them to come in and do the job with no oversight and operate in the best interest of the town. Who in their right mind is going to do that? They're going to operate in Kemper's best interest. I don't believe they did that. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
So we said two separate ones, so when I hand this, I hand it into two, is that correct?
Good evening, Phil Marshall, 30 Rockaway Place. This also concerns the Knoll, but more the catering contract and renovations of the building. In July of 2017, the township entered into a contract with Knoll West Country Club LLC to provide catering and banquet services at both the Knoll East and West Clubhouses. The caterer agreed to monthly rent an amount of $30,000 per month. The specifications for the contract spelled out planned renovations of both clubhouses, with renovations at the East to take place in 2017 and at the West in 2018. During renovations, the caterer was to pay a reduced rent of $15,000 per month. After renovations were completed, the rent agreed to was $55,000 per month. These renovations are also referred to in Sections 5.3 and 5.4 of the contract. Had the township moved forward and completed the renovations, the revenue to the utility would have been increased by $300,000 annually. The catering contact is 142 pages long. There is about one page of that that spells out the responsibilities of the caterer to the golf operations. This includes providing food services for outings, which is another major revenue source for the utility. It is impossible to provide adequate oversight when responsibilities are not spelled out in detail. I suggest that future contracts be more specific. As Kevin noted previously, there doesn't seem to be a qualified township employee overseeing Kemper Sports. The same can be said for the operations of the clubhouse and the oversight of the caterer. In closing, the township is costing no utility revenue by not having their own qualified person in charge that could push the renovations through and get them completed in a timely fashion. The contract expires in July 2021, I believe, instead of 2020. And there is a year, another year on top of that with option to extend. The renovations are not undertaken, the utility will face another situation where there is only one bid for the contract. As rent is currently less than one-third of what it used to be before the facilities became dated, we need to get moving and get to work on this and get this done.
Through you, Council President, to both previous speakers. As I alluded to in my report with regard to the committee that was formed, I think everything that both speakers have brought forward are concerns that the Council and the administration share that were vetted when we did meet to discuss the contracts, both contracts, at a previous meeting. And I think all of those items, including what Mr. Brancato has presented, will be listed on that agenda when we meet in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Alicia Di Giovanni, 109 Fox Hill Road in Denville. I have pictures and maps for you to look for these. I'm asking for assistance in the town for numerous concerns. I live right next to the new boat racks on 109 Fox Hill Road on Rainbow Lakes. Surprisingly, which I cannot understand, that there is...
Ma'am, could I ask you to speak into the mic a little bit, only for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I forgot my music days. There's some major concerns as far as liability, safety, wildlife, and the list can go on. I live on 109 Fox Hill Road, right next to me is now the new boat rack, which is a monstrous piece that is put up now. Yes, I am aware that our LCC Rainbow Lakes Community Club is a, now they made themselves mandatory to pay fines, and they seem not to follow their own bylaws. It was not voted as a community, and I know that is our issue that we need to address as a community. However, we're under your umbrella as Parsippany, and I ask for the plea here. It's right, as you can see, on top of my hedges. There's no permit rules that I have been trying to find out that I find extremely difficult. There are no permits, no guidelines that are needed for boat racks, and Parsippany Troy Hills is a large lake community. I think that needs to be looked at as far as liability, and again, safety. As you are all aware, that we are very strict here in Parsippany for permits, as noted from friends of mine that are contractors and other contractors that looked at this. There is major concern that the height is eight feet by five inches, that it's monstrosity. There's no footing of a slope over 15% high. Concerning factor, there's no footing, and there's no nothing. Supposedly, it was not needed, and I have been dealing with zoning, construction, and variance, and also the tax assessing to try to help me. Why is this no guidelines with boat racks in a boat community? There's concerns that I'm afraid of gardening, concern for me, liability of people on that piece of property, as well as wildlife, and also me accessing the side of my property. Again, safety concerns, and the four leers of the boats are not at all strapped on. Somebody gets a boat, falls off, or whatever. I just, and there's additional concerns, mosquitoes building up. You'll see that there are mosquitoes, there's water. We're dealing with some health issues here as well. I guess the old saying, ignorance is bliss? Yeah, I'm a recent master gardener, and we can go on the list of what is really a problem here with these boat racks. The other issue, when I was trying to see how do I address this on a visual sense, I would need a variance to get a fence higher to cover it. I've approached the possibility of doing an art piece that may not need a guideline. So again, I'm trying to work on the most amicable way, safety way, and for the best for the community. And for the community to be aware of why we do not have any guidelines. to preserve, which is now a large topic of everything, and also for the safety of me, of that one of those falling or sliding in the ice or whatever, because there is absolutely no footing. And I cannot believe, I have been exhausting every avenue of trying to see that there is guidelines. There is none. Can you please answer that for me?
You know, is there any ordinance?
Yeah. How is that overlooked in a boat community?
I'd have to take a look at the zoning ordinance and speak to the township planner. Have you spoken to the Lake Club about this?
I'm sorry, the who?
The Lake Community.
Yeah, the Lake Club.
I tried to amicably deal with the person who was involved with this, and it's, forget about it. Now, there's just so much going on because Channel 2 News was just on two weeks ago about the liens and how it's not mandatory by Jay Weber. This actually made me wake up of what's really going in my backyard. I'm recovering from an 18-wheeler accident four years ago on 287, and this woke me up. This is amplifying what's going on in the world, that people do what they want to do because they think they can, and being bullied. I have been threatened.
Well, I think by leaving it in the hands of our attorney to have him look at things and to speak with the zoning...
I spoke to zoning. I got to run around.
Well, you're a resident. I'm sorry, but this is an attorney, and hopefully he will have a little better...
I hope so, and I thank you so much for helping. Something that we need to do here.
How close is the boat rack to your property line?
It's less than two feet in certain areas, and it's on a slope. No footing. I'm not an engineer. I wish I was. You know, I'm trying to figure out my passion other than saving the ducks and the swans and the world. But it's just, I can't believe that it got passed.
And did zoning tell you it's not an accessory structure because there was no footing on it? Is that what's...
Correct. That's exactly the angle.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we're talking about, as you see the images, several boat racks. We've got mosquitoes. You know, I'm not a rocket scientist. I might look like one, but not. I'm very concerned of the community. I woke up, you know, between dealing with medical stuff. I'm sorry. You know, maybe I care too much for people and what's going on in the community. Excuse me, this shit has to stop. The bullying has to stop. The palming has to stop. We all are in the same boat together, and no pun intended. We want what's best for our kids, our family, our grandkids. I hope you could find an answer, and I'd appreciate if there's anything I can do. The other, on the side note, I want to thank you for your police department, for your engineer department, and all the other people that are trying to help that. I live right on Fox Hill. It's Indy 500, and I'm working with the traffic. I'm the woman who makes the peach cobbler and thanks people. So I think one's coming your way. But I just want to say thank you. I know it's like we're all up here being pissy, but I also want to say thank you for all your work because we're living in challenging times, and I appreciate anything that we can do. Connect our hearts so we can expand and change on a positive note. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Council President, Mr. Madden and I can also circulate an inquiry to our colleagues throughout Morris County, both clerks and BAs.
Why are you involving Mr. Madden? I got nothing to do with that. No, I'm just kidding.
See if there are other municipalities that regulate this and get copies of those ordinances that we can forward to Mr. Lot for his review.
Sure, no problem.
The other thing is to, okay, I'm going to look like, okay, the lady's going to save another duck. The other thing is, is I did inquire through NJDEP.
Okay. You're out of your time.
If you could just please post more of that in the town hall so we can educate people of the laws.
Okay.
So we can save time around. I'll leave my pen here. And again, if there's anything I can do, I'd be happy to...
Thank you.
Thank you. Want my phone number?
You can leave it on the signing sheet, ma'am.
You can leave it on the sheet if you want.
Leave it on the...
Do you want me to spot this?
If you want to give it to me, sure.
If you don't mind, I'd like to keep...
Yeah, it's better to give it to the township attorney.
Ms. Di Giovanni, please take the business card, okay?
I will. Thank you so much.
Please, did you put your phone number on there so they can reach out to you?
Yep, I'll take a look at that. Thank you.
You want me to leave the phone number here with you?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you so much.
Pat Lonza, 20 Gladly Drive in Denville. And as you saw earlier, raised my hand as one of the Knoll people. I just have one simple question. What's the town's ultimate goal for the Knoll utility? Is the goal to return it back to it was before Kemper came in, where it was township-run and run well, okay? Or are we just going to see it go to, by way of just becoming a public entity, where you do some kind of land lease to an operator? As a 28-year member, I think it'd be, I'd like to know. I think the whole membership of the Knoll would like to know the answer to that question. What is the council and the town's direction for the Knoll utility? Thank you.
I think it's a committee, right, is going to make that determination?
Mr. Kazmark, you mentioned that the committee would be meeting in a couple of weeks. Mr. Madden, would it be possible for us to have a closed session on this this evening just to discuss what we've been hearing from the golfers so that we have, maybe we can speed this up?
I don't want to speak for Mr. Lot. I think if it's relative to the contents of the negotiated contract, we could do it from that perspective.
That's correct.
I think talking about it in more general terms, that would fall into the open session category. But if you want to speak about the contract, we can add that to the executive session.
And that would be at the closed session that we could do that.
Correct.
We'll add that to the resolution. We'll add contract negotiations, Kemper contract. Is that what you guys would like, according to Mr. Kazmark?
Yes, please.
You can add that to tonight's resolution then, and that's what we'll do.
It's up to the members of the council.
Okay. We'll put that on?
Sure.
All right.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. I want to thank you for this opportunity to talk. He's gone. There he is. My name is Brad Muniz, 5 Ashland Road, Parsippany. I am also a member, or a former member, of the Knoll Golf Committee. I'm also a member of the Knoll Country Club. I want to thank everybody again for letting me speak. I want to echo the comments of the prior people that were up here, and I hope that you append their comments with mine. As I mentioned before, the town entered into an agreement with Kemper management and have completely left them unattended. There's been nobody up there from the township overseeing. Certain people that have been affiliated or involved with the process were completely extricated from their involvement. The town has a fiduciary responsibility to oversee this asset. It's one of the largest assets of the township and it's revenue-producing. You can't abdicate your responsibility by allowing them to just appoint somebody by proxy. They've appointed somebody as their superintendent, which has some connection with the town. For a little background, that individual has lied to me on three different occasions. He doesn't have any connection with the golfers, but you wouldn't know that because nobody from the township, representing the township, has any involvement with the Knoll to report back to you. Now, Mr., I'm sorry, Kazmark?
Yes.
You mentioned this committee. Were you aware that there was a committee previously before Kemper was involved?
I was referencing a committee that the council formed two meetings ago.
I understand that. Do you refer, aware that there was a committee previously?
Yes, it's established by ordinance.
Okay. So it was a committee of very dedicated people that were very interested in the Knoll East and West. I was appointed by Mayor Mimi Letts because I played the East a lot. And we were all dismissed out of hand by the administration, saying, I believe the words were, "We were elitist golfers." So, you know, grown up in Lodi, New Jersey, it was never referred to as an elitist person, okay? So I don't know why we were completely dismissed, but the administration chose to appoint people for a more diverse group. You had a group of individuals that were dedicated. They felt they were stewards for the asset and for the township to help protect that and help advocate. And I know that a lot of people that were here and people at the Knoll that are very interested in seeing it come forward, none of us, I have a group of 16 people that I play golf with, none of us were approached about this. So I don't know what constitutes diverse or having knowledge of the golf course, but I can, I'll give you my ethnic and economic background, very diverse, and I played the Knoll 60 times this year. So nobody's ever asked me, "What do you think's going on at the Knoll?" Nope. You guys chose to politicize it and just say, "Let's get rid of the people that have all the institutional knowledge," and completely disregard them. And I'm sure that these other people are knowledgeable. Hopefully, they have some sort of financial background to be able to aid in that process, to give some insight, and hopefully they have some good knowledge and background as to relate to the Knoll. Because we don't, as golfers, we don't like what's going on there, and I hope that you really move forward and clean up the issues there. I want to thank you very much for your time. You have a question for me?
No, no, I just want to make sure you just signed in.
I signed in. Yep. Any other questions? How much time do I have left?
A minute twenty.
A minute twenty. I can sing and dance, all right?
Use that to compliment.
Tell us about Lodi.
Much different than here. Much, much different than here. So, believe me, I saw a lot of politics in Lodi and didn't like it there. Thank you.
My name, excuse me, my name is Bob Venezia. I live at 102 Brooklawn Drive. During the public session of the last meeting, one of the speakers remarked that it was difficult or even impossible to access council meeting videotapes on the township website. I can confirm his experience. At the time, Mayor Soriano cited antiquated technology as the reason why the town's current website cannot provide these videos in a timely manner. However, even using this outdated technology that we have, the town is currently producing video output within a day or two of the council meeting. Parsippany Focus is then able to take that output and post the video on its website within two to three days of the actual meeting. And using the same technology, videos of council meetings that were held not that long ago were made available to the public on the prior township website within days of the actual meetings. In summary, there seems to be no logical or acceptable reason why the newest version of the Parsippany website cannot provide council meeting videos on a more timely basis. And I'd like to know if there are any plans to rectify this situation. Thank you.
Through you, Council President?
Yes.
I'm going to call Mr. Kevin Brancato to come to the speaker, to the microphone for a little bit to help me with this, because that's the gentleman you're referring to. Kevin, can you help me out?
A little bit.
Okay, thank you.
I actually, I actually was the person that brought that up at that last meeting. Afterwards, after the meeting, a person showed me that the videos are on the website backwards. So the first video I saw was August of 2018. When you scroll down, you get down to, it's August of, what, 2019 now?
Right.
We're still not as fast...
I think it's up to September now.
Yeah, it's still not as fast as Mr. Cahill puts them up on Parsippany Focus. But I did, and I did send an email apologizing to the mayor.
Yes.
How did you get that?
You go on to transparency, and you look for council meeting videos.
One thing...
And the first one that pops up is like August of 2018. And then when you scroll down, you'll see the more recent ones. But it's still not up to date with...
One thing I will agree with both of you, that it's clunky, and it needs to be fixed.
Yep.
Thank you.
Nicholas Homiak, 2609 of Lake Hiawatha. I'd like to know, or be, for people to be transparent, how does the Knoll as a public utility, and I think I did ask this question in the past and never gotten an answer, how does it help the average taxpayer or running the town at all as a revenue generator other than just to compensate for itself as a golf course? I'd like to know, like, what is done with the money from that landscape? And my experience getting to know the new management, they seem to have a, to be more environmentally aware because that, there was a lot of things that were just all over the place down there. They're starting to recycle better. They're starting to at least open up to some environmental issues because it is, even though it is a golf course, it is first and foremost a landscape and does include the river-sensitive areas and everything down there. I know this could probably never happen at this time, but they should close that road, the Knoll Lane or Knoll Drive, because all you do is you get people riding through there as a shortcut, and they dump all the garbage in the woods. And years ago, I remember when I was a kid, that was all private. So, yeah, turn it back to a dirt road or put a gate up, which just sounds ridiculous. And I wondered, what did the 2018 rain have to do with the Knoll's loss of revenue? Because if you remember, in 2018, there's quite a bit of rain, and I don't think golfers want to go out in the rain. So I was just wondering about that demise of the revenue, how much of it was related to the nature itself? And I guess that's the only questions I have for tonight, just I was surprised to know everybody's so dissatisfied, because I really don't know everything that's going on, but I'd just like to know how the...
Well, Nick, to answer your question, if it's raining, people can't golf. So you can't make money. So the more rain we get, the less people can go golf, and that's where you're not bringing in the money.
But the acquisition was that it was the management that was the demise.
Well, you just stated in 2018, we had a lot of rain, and you wanted to know how that affected the income.
First speaker on the Knoll, I apologize for forgetting Glenn, I believe, it was mentioning, I put it down in a note, he said that there was a noticeable change in the operation related to revenue, and he quoted the year 2018.
Right.
In relation to the new management or the people who had taken over. And I was just wondering, because I remember there was a lot of rain.
The rain did impact the, certainly did impact the revenue.
All right. But the way it was said, it was implicated that the new management at the Knoll was the cause for the revenue demise. That's the way I heard it. I didn't, you know. All right.
Thank you. Through you, Council President, Nick, just to answer your question about the financing at the utility, the utility is a standalone utility. The revenue that's generated stays within that utility. That's the one utility that does not get commingled with the township budget or surplus offsets or anything of that nature. I could tell you that, you know, to echo the council president and the council vice president, we definitely took a hit in 2018. Actually, all three utilities took a hit based on the volume of rain that we experienced. And we did a preliminary analysis of the finances at the Knoll through the end of August, which the council looked at at their September meeting. As the golf season comes to an end, we will finalize that analysis, and that, again, will be shared with the committee and then ultimately with the full council as they decide whether or not there should be fiscal changes, catering changes, management changes, whatever the design is going to be prospectively at the Knoll. I hope that answers your question. Right.
In relation to the new management, or the people who had taken over. And I was just wondering, because I remember there was a lot of rain.
The rain did impact the, certainly did impact the, the revenue.
All right, but the way it was said, it was implicated that the new management at the Knoll was the cause for the revenue demise. That's the way I, I heard it. I didn't, you know. All right.
Thank you.
Through you, council president. Nick, just to answer your question about the, the financing at the utility, the utility's a standalone utility. The revenue that's generated stays within that utility. It does, that's the one utility that does not get commingled with the township budget or surplus offsets or anything of that nature. I could tell you that, you know, to echo the council president and the council vice president, we definitely took a hit in 2018. Actually, all three utilities took a hit based on the volume of rain that we experienced. And we did a preliminary analysis of the finances at the Knoll through the end of August, which the council looked at at their September meeting. As the golf season comes to an end, we will finalize that analysis, and that again will be shared with the committee, and then ultimately with the full council, as they decide whether or not there should be fiscal changes, catering changes, management changes, whatever, whatever the design is going to be prospectively at the Knoll. I hope that answers your question.
I also found out they're using herbicides down there, and I, I don't think that's a, that's a good idea. Like in a big flower pot, or if they have a, a mulch field with flowers around a flag, human labor, you could pull out the, you could pull the weeds out, you don't have to use herbicides. But they claim, because they have a low labor force and the rush for time, that they have to use a herbicide. And I, I think that practice should be ended.
Thank you.
James Griffey, Parsippany. I'm glad that the Knoll Advisory Committee's here. I may have some information that you may find useful about the superintendent from Kemper Sports. Also, I'm glad that there's three township attorneys here today, so next time that you want to try and transcribe something, hopefully you'll get it accurate, and you're spending money on the taxpayers, when you're spending the taxpayers' dollars. Anyway, I'm here today because Mayor Soriano had made a statement at the September 17th meeting, and I just wanted to ask him a few questions regarding that. And just so the record is clear, this is what he had said.
Mr. President, I'm going to direct every member of council not to respond to any of the comments made by Mr. Parekh, who are currently in litigation.
And got behind the wheel and saw what had happened. The missed half of it.
As long as you don't take my time away from me.
Nope.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I will again remind council that was first.
Stop it again? All right, I, everyone got your message, but we can't hear what's being played.
I should have five minutes interrupted, uninterrupted.
Go ahead and play it again.
Look, I, I maintain that last year, once I became fully aware of the facts and got behind the wheel and saw what had happened, and saw the documents, that he was targeted as retaliation. The president, I would respectfully insist that the mayor, we talk about this in closed session tonight, it's on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Lot.
Okay, so my, my first question is, Mayor, what documents did you review that you're referring to? That's the first question. The second question is, who targeted me? And the third question is, who retaliated against me? Now, I know, obviously, I appreciate Mr. Lot jumping in and shutting you down, because that answers my question, that you're not going to respond because of litigation. So I'm asking you to take your own advice when you ask this council on September 3rd to release Raj Parekh's 50-page paper to public. So I'm asking you now to disregard the advice, take your own advice, and answer my questions. Will you do that?
I'm sorry, are you asking me to release the 50-page document?
No, I'm asking you to answer the three questions I just asked you. What documents did you review? Who targeted me? And who retaliated against me?
I'm not answering that question right now because of my litigation.
Thank you.
However, I stand by my comments.
Thank you. And that, and I'm asking you to take your own advice that you gave this council on September 3rd to release this report and discuss it in the public. As you said, you got the township attorneys, all of them are here, we could work, and I got my attorney here too, we could work it out right now. I'm asking you to be open and tell the people what, what you're referring to.
We are currently working it out, we are currently working it out right now.
All right, so let's talk about your recent press release. You keep saying that it's the Republicans that are doing it, it's the Republican wasteful spending of taxpayers' dollars. Did you forget that there's Democrats on the board here that voted for it too? Or are you just deceiving the public on purpose?
It's been a Republican administration that has ushered this in for years.
I just want to know, in your press release, you make no mention of any Democrats doing anything. You refer to Republicans. I just want to know why you're deceiving the public. You're an intelligent man, you don't need to leave out the Democrats. You don't have to politicize this.
The proposal, the proposal was, didn't, no, I am, I'm responding. The proposal, you, you get extra time. Give him all the time he needs, okay? The Republicans on the council were the ones, and, and said it straight out, that wrote it out, that wrote out the proposal.
You make no mention of who voted for it.
No, I don't.
Okay.
Because, because they wrote it.
But you don't mention who vote, who voted for it. But I'll move on.
We don't need to, you just did. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Let's talk about your campaign promise, about cleaning up Parsippany. The only thing, the only people who cleaned up were people from your campaign. Let's talk about them. Matt Clarkin, you brought him in at over $70,000, right? Never worked a day in his life at the township. You brought him in at a salary similar to Michelle Sylvans.
He's more qualified than Michelle.
No problem. Tom Jones, brought him in at over $50,000, right? I don't know what his status is. Your campaign manager. Jonathan Nelson, $90,000. Anybody else?
Jonathan Nelson is gone.
Wait, but anybody else? Oh, wait, hold on, your secretary, Sue, she worked on your campaign, $50,000. Anybody else? Yes.
Have you looked at her resume?
No, it's okay, wait, anybody else? Yes, your warrant, currently a council candidate's daughter, was employed by the township at one point, right? I believe so, yes. Summer intern, check it out. Listen, I could go on and on and on, there's more, but I only get five minutes. Let's talk about how history repeats itself. Let's talk about your partner, Keith Kazmark, right? He's the mayor of Woodland Park. What he does is, he's similar to what you did. He brings in Sam Yodis to direct the PAL at $120,000 a year. It's the same individual that you waived health benefits for and gave it to him after 30 days. The only township employee ever to get that kind of benefit, that waiver, by you, which Mr. Lot says you are entitled to do. You could waive it, but you don't waive it for anybody else, just Mr. Yodis, who makes $120,000, knows nothing about Parsippany, and just happens to be, guess what? His master ceremonies for his reelection campaign.
That, by the way, was brought in front of the council.
Okay, did you want to deny that he wasn't the master ceremonies for his reelection campaign?
Keep talking.
Okay, thank you. I'll take that as truthful. Man, how much time do I have left?
A minute twenty.
Minute twenty. The next thing is Kemper Sports. For people at the Knoll, what's interesting and what you may not know, and I'm just here, hopefully I can give you some, shed some light on it, is that that gentleman, Ozner Charles, had applied for the PAL position as well, as Mr. Yodis did. I don't know whether or not you knew that, but if you look at his resume, because I opened it, he has no experience at running a Knoll or two golf courses, let alone one. So what I'm asking, and what I think I know, I pride myself on attention to detail and investigations, and what I can tell you is that if you call Kemper Sports, they will tell you, or, I don't want to say that, but I would ask the council to direct, I wouldn't even say the town attorney or Mr. Parekh who's here as well, because that would cost the taxpayers money. I don't want to do that, but I would ask you to do this.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. I would ask you to do this. Chief Miller's in the back, he could conduct an investigation for free, and he would do an objective and thorough, great job. I'm asking you to direct him to see if anybody on his panel had contacted Kemper Sports and made the recommendation to have an Oz Charles placed as the director of the, the superintendent of the Knoll Golf Course. Thank you.
It's all yours. No. Thank you.
Papatacho, 182 Hawkins Avenue. Mr. Lot, this is in reference to Mr. Yodis. He was hired on 3/4, that was his start date. His insurance began on 4/1, so that's less than a month. I've examined the township handbook, and nowhere does it say the mayor has a discretion to waive or to give other people insurance, to allow it. So where can I find this? In writing, where can I see this?
We have a self-insurance plan. I believe it's within our discretion as part of the self-insurance document to leave the requirements of the plan. I'll take a closer look at it tomorrow.
So if I ask for the self-insurance plan, if I?
You can make the Oprah request for it.
Okay, thank you.
See no one else come forward, entertain a motion to close the public here.
Motion.
Oh, you can come on upstairs.
No, no, we have someone else coming up. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, council members. My name is Bill Pesznik, I live at 49 Longridge Road. Putting Stone Developers is proposing a minor subdivision adjoining our neighborhood on an extreme steep slope property. They're opening up a grandfathered-in major subdivision that was approved 20 years ago.